This will now be followed by a City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting, and that's chaired by Erin Ammons.
All right, so if the clerk would please call a roll.
City Council Members Ammons.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Hazen.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Will there be approval, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting on August 13th, 2018?
I will motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hazen, second by Councilmember Jacobson. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none. Public input. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the committee of the whole? I do have one card. Yes, please. Celeste, come on.
She's the presentation.
Yeah, your presentation is coming up next, if that's what you want. Okay, all right. So we do have a card from Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, Evelyn B. Underwood, and she chooses not to address the members but asks that her position be entered into the record. She is continually, we are continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. Is there anyone else? Seeing none. We'll move on to presentations and the Urbana Free Library.
Thank you very much for your time. It has been another wonderful year at the Urbana Free Library. As you know, the Board of Trustees has to submit to you, the City Council, a record of the year's accomplishments in particular categories, and Charlie has a copy of the annual report for everyone. What's attached to the annual report is a draft copy of what's called the IPLAR, the Illinois Public Library Annual Report. With the MUNIS transition, we are still working our way through the last little bits of all the financials and making sure all our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed. So we have to turn this in by Wednesday, the IPLAR report, so we will send you a final draft. We've got the initial numbers in there. The final numbers will come to the state and to you on Wednesday. But the report on the front is done. So let's talk about some of the great things that happened at the library this year. First, some numbers. We had almost 28,500 people attend 789 programs. It's a lot of people coming to the library. We have over 11,600 cardholders using the library. 795,000 items checked out. That's physical items as well as eBooks and e-audio and a now downloadable video as well, or streaming video. We answered 65,700 reference questions, which is up from last year. Over 50,000 computer sessions totaling over 43,000 hours were used by our patrons in the library, and over 365,000 people visited the library. We have the different meeting rooms, the Saddleway Conference Room and the Lewis Auditorium. They were used 541 times by individuals or community groups, and the study rooms upstairs were used over 2,000 times. And I'm really proud to say that our volunteer hours were up by over 900. We had over 3,000 hours volunteered by people, which is really great. It helps us provide a richer experience with all our volunteers participating, and it makes us more a part of the community fabric when we allow people to spend more time with us in different ways. So we'd like to give you a little snapshot. Last week when we checked, over 26,000 items worth over half a million dollars were checked out at that moment. And that doesn't include another almost 1,000 items that were eBooks. We bought purchase in a group purchase, so we don't have a price on those, but that's another 1,000 items at even $20 apiece, let's say. That's another $20,000 worth of value checked out to our patrons at that moment. This was a big year for partnerships for us. It's really important to get out in the community, like I was saying. We had a teacher, an Urbana resident, Brandon Rutherford, who teaches in Champaign. He has a coral reef project in which he works with his students. They have more than 10 coral reef tanks, and the kids learn how to manage the saltwater tanks. So they had installed two saltwater tanks at the library over the past year, which was a really great experience. There was one in the circulation desk and one on the children's desk downstairs. And he trained volunteers, some of which were young people, ten and under, how to manage the saltwater and check the pH and maintain the tanks for us. That was a really great partnership, which has folded up for right now, but we're looking at more opportunities for next summer perhaps. I had mentioned earlier this year when we talked about the budget that we have a brand-new partnership with the I School at Illinois. They are prioritizing having opportunities, workplace development opportunities, for people interested in public libraries. So we have these practicum students that spend 100 hours a semester with us. They're building on that and having the students spend 15 hours a week for two semesters in a row, one practicum experience and one independent and study experience. But 15 hours a week gives them more time with us, us more time with them, and with our community. For that second semester, the I School is waiving their fees, their tuition, and paying them a stipend of $5,000. So we have two students that are starting this week, and we're very excited to have them onboard to learn more and to contribute more to our community. Also, we have that new partnership. There's an intergovernmental agreement with the USD, so that students who live outside of our district but qualify for free reduced lunch with the fee waiver program, they can get library cards now, whereas they couldn't in the past. And currently, we have 82 students signed up. And we were just at registration, so we anticipate more students, but we're really pleased that we've got 82 children with library cards in their hands that wouldn't have had them before. So a great partnership moving ahead. Also, just working with individuals in the community, there's a little butterfly. We had someone donate for the second year enrollment, Michael Murphy, one of the Rotarians and scientists, and interested in having real-life science experiences for people. So not only do we have fish, we had some butterflies that grew in the library and then were released outside in our pollinator garden. In addition, we are super excited about our partnership with Cunningham Township. We are leasing the property at 203 West Green Street to the township, where they built community garden and have different community events. So we have our little free library there. We have our pollinator garden there, and they are growing food for people, doing food distribution, working with common ground for food prep and food preservation, and again, ongoing programming. And it's a way for people to learn different skills as well as come together as a community, and the events have been super popular. Our Teen Open Lab is a flagship program that we have. We have opened it this year to four days a week. We just open Mondays. Even in tight fiscal times, working with our partners at the CU Community Fab Lab and having them give us some more volunteer time and pulling our staffing money together in a different way, we're able to be open on Mondays. We have had, since the Teen Open Lab opened five years ago, over 17,500 people come to Teen Open Lab. That is, we had 762 teen open labs since it started, and we get an average of 23 children, teenagers, call them children sometimes, but the teens are coming, and they really love it. And we had fewer at the beginning and more coming now, so this has been a great success. So whether they're using the sewing machines, whether they're recording their own music, people have checked out their guitars and Wawa pedals and made music and made videos. This is a very great experience for them, and we are open year-round for them, and now Mondays too, which is exciting. The archives. Given some funds for the Friends of the Urbana Free Library and the Urbana Free Library Foundation and library funding, we were able to fund 20 hours a week of interns, 10 hours for two students. So what they have done is identified the Chinook collection. So we found AV materials. They've got base and department histories, building records and oral histories, photographs, and technical training collection, which is going to be super exciting when we can get that ready to go out for people. So this next year, the library and the foundation are also funding interns for 10 hours a week so we can learn more about the collection and start making it more accessible. This is, it's a great collection, and there's some programming going on around it as well. We launched a 3D printing service this year, so if you want to upload your files to us, we can print the items for us, and you can check them, pick them up behind the checkout desk. One of our partners, the Fab Lab, was working with the University Middle School, and the kids had to create bugs of their own design, and then they printed the bugs at the library and picked them up, which was a lot of fun. And there was someone that lived in another state within Urbana, and he thought he sent his print job to his local library, but he sent it to us, and he was sad to think he'd have to drive across the country to get it. So we shipped it to him for free. But we were excited that someone searched the web and found Urbana for printing their 3D materials. So that's exciting to see that moving a little bit. We also launched some new collections. There's Hoopla, which is downloadable, sorry, streaming videos and graphic novels and things, and that is a great service, which I know my family has taken advantage of already. The benefit of Hoopla is that it's simultaneous use, so you don't have to wait for someone else to return the item. We all know that digital items can be used simultaneously, but the service models out there usually work more like a physical item, so you can check out one book or one eBook at a time. With Hoopla, the library pays per checkout, but if you have a book discussion group that wants to check out the same book at once, you can all have it at the same time, or you can all download the same movie. So this is a new service for us. We're excited about. With money from the Friends and with money from our regular materials budget, we started a music equipment collection for children, rhythm sticks, egg shakers, and guitars for young people. We've got more in our productivity collection, including a mobile projector, a GoPro, and a VHS to DVD converter. And in our crafts collection, we have a yarn ball and swift and winder. So when you get those big old balls of yarn, you can put them in something, when you get the skeins, you can put them into balls so that they're easier to use. So trying to make people's lives easier in different ways and have them explore new paths of creativity and education. Our foundation and Friends continue to fundraise for us. The foundation has pledged to pay for their porch repair and to replace the chiller and the compressor on the roof and the RFPs. The advertising for bids went out for that last week, so in three weeks, we should see who is interested in helping us with the repair work for the chillers, and we're still waiting on for some drawings for the porch. So the facility continues to age. The front part of the building just celebrated 100 years. Thank you for celebrating with us. Thank you for speaking, Dennis. And we continue to move ahead. With funds from the city this year, we replaced the aging boiler from 1975. So we have many patrons who are younger than the boiler was, and we're glad to have an up-to-date, that part of the heating and cooling system. So that is my report. Thank you very much for everything you do for us.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Dennis?
So how many days are left with the big book sale?
It ended today. Today was Free Book Day.
Today was the Free Book Day. All right.
But there'll be one the week before Thanksgiving, so there'll be another book sale coming up.
Very good.
Any other questions? If not, I have one. So the 3D printing, what are the pieces made of, the objects that are made?
They're plastic.
It's just?
They come in a plastic thread on a spool, and they're multiple different colors. There's a form on the website you can fill out and pick the different elements of your object. I'd be happy to send you a link if you'd like.
Okay, that'll be cool.
Okay.
Were there any other questions? All right, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is staff reports. All right. Seeing, seeing none. We'll move on to the Resolution Number 2018, oh, there is one.
Oh, Resolution.
No, the resolution. Oh, okay. Resolution Number 2018-08-040R, Resolution for Improvement by Municipality Under the Illinois Highway Code, MCOR Project 5, Green Street from west of Bucie Avenue to Ray Street, PE2, Public Works.
Good evening. Craig Schoenweiler, Assistant City Engineer, here to you tonight to speak about Project Number 5, but I wanted to give you an update on Project Number 1, which is from the western city limits over to just around Lincoln Avenue. That project's pretty much wrapped up with construction, at least the hardscape work. We have a lot of landscape work that, you know, is weather-dependent, so we have to clean up and a lot of punch list items, but essentially, that project is finished up. We are now moving to the next phase in Urbana, which is what we call Project Number 5. Out of, there are five total projects, this will be the fifth, the last one, out of all of the MCOR projects. Three are in Champaign, two in Urbana. So this would be the last one that would run from basically just west of Bucie down to Ray Street on Green. What you have before you tonight is a motor fuel tax resolution that appropriates funds, state motor fuel tax funds, for what we call Phase 2 Engineering Services, which is the preparation of plans, specifications, estimates, other miscellaneous engineering items, along with the acquisition of any necessary right-of-way or easements for this project. It's recommended that the City Council approve the attached resolution for improvement by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code in the amount of $600,000. Does anybody have any questions?
Mary, Councilmember Wu.
So I actually just asked Charlie this because I said this is a resolution, and it's very interesting paperwork for resolution here. It's not in our traditional format.
Right.
I just wanted to draw that to the attention of other people if they were looking at it a little sideways like I was. So my question to you is this, $600,000 from the motor fuel tax. How much is being contributed by the state?
Well, for this portion, this would be 100% City of Urbana. So this would be our share.
Okay.
For those services that are outlined in the resolution.
So none of the funds are coming from any other taxing body?
No, no.
Okay.
And this format is the format that's required by the Department of Transportation, so that's why we have to use that.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, this would be 100% city funds. Now, it's, the resolution is to appropriate for all anticipated costs.
Thank you.
Councilmember Miller.
Elizabeth, I'm just assuming this was part of our approved budget. There's not a budget amendment here or anything like that, but, okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Mr. Miller.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2018-08-040R, Resolution for Improvement by Municipality Under the Illinois Highway Code for MCOR Project Number 5 from Green Street, or on Green Street from west of Bucie Avenue to Ray Street.
Second.
For approval to the full council with recommendation for approval.
So it's been moved by Councilmember Miller, second by Councilmember Wu. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to Ordinance Number 2018-08-056, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number 2, Omnibus Finance.
Good evening. Donal, Financial Analyst. Before City Council tonight, the second budget amendment of the fiscal year 1819. This is a fairly routine budget amendment. A majority of these items are rebudgets, which basically mean moving unspent money from the previous fiscal year to the current fiscal year due to changes in timing of the expenditures. I go over these rebudget items real quick. The first items, the first one is we have some police department items, and we have some unspent money for police uniforms, medical services, and the hotspot policing grant. So we have some unspent money from the previous fiscal years. We're going to move that to the current fiscal year. We also have some, so this is what we do every year, that we, we have available money, that we, we have available money for small schedule equipment. We also do a rebudget, so we rebudget all the available money across all the departments. We also have some unspent money for historic preservation from the market fund. We're going to do a rebudget for that as well. And we also have, we're going to do also, we're going to also do a rebudget for the central TUF money that to be used on the downtown mini part and also the Boneyard Great Crossing. In fiscal year 19, we're going to also purchase a new interview room veto system that we can get to purchase in fiscal year 18. We also have some other changes beside rebudgets. We're going to have the fire truck repairs. So after we send the fire truck to the mechanics for repairs, specifically the rustic frame rails, the mechanics found some other parts that also need to be replaced. The additional amount needed for the replacement is a little over $17,000. And by replacing these parts, we also increase the useful life of the truck, thus reducing long-term costs. The last item is the Justice Assistant Grant. So this is due to oversight, so the, a little over $5,600 of money was not included in the FY19 budget, so this budget amendment will correct that error. In terms of fiscal impact, these changes to the budget do not have a significant impact on the general fund. The majority is that these increases in expenditures are either offset by revenue or are due to changes in timing of the expenditures. Staff recommends the committee to forward the budget amendment authorize these adjustments to the fiscal year 19 budget for approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Councilmember Miller.
I'd like to make a motion. I'll move Ordinance Number 2018-08-056, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number 2, forward to the full council with recommendation for approval, and I will second that.
So it's been moved by Councilmember Miller and second by Councilmember Hazen. Any further discussion? Seeing none from the members, I do have some questions, or at least one question. I'm just trying to make sure I understand that what I'm looking at is unspent money that's going to be repurposed for the various different things that we see here. Mm-hmm. And I'm looking at 20,000, 93,000, 22,000, 72,000, 5,000, 7,000, 17,000, and 5,000. So all of that money is unspent money that is being repurposed.
All these items are, on the first page are rebudgets. The second page, these items are not rebudgets.
Okay, so for the fire truck repairs are not rebudgets, we're going to use some of that money that was unspent for the repairs, for the fire truck. I think Elizabeth's coming up to help us clarify. I thought you were doing okay.
So in the situation with the fire truck, that's not a rebudget of unspent funds from last year. The repairs just turned out to be more costly than we anticipated. This makes sense, again, because as Dawn said, it's going to extend the useful life of a very expensive piece of equipment, even though it is more costly than we expected.
No, I understand that part. I'm just trying to make sure I understand that, because we, when we budget and we made some cuts and we did various different things, but I'm looking at what looks like to be almost 200-some thousand dollars in unspent money from last year. Right?
Yeah, so when we say rebudget, generally, we're just talking about timing issues. It was, you know, in many cases, for example, a piece of equipment that was in the budget in FY18. We still need that piece of equipment. I'm thinking, you know, maybe of the interview room cameras as an example. Those still need to be replaced. It just didn't get done before June 30th, and so we need to do it this year instead.
So the money that we're looking at are going back to those same departments that are not being reallocated. Outside of the fire department truck, the unspent funds are going back to where they were budgeted for in FY2018?
Right, for the same purpose.
For the same purpose.
When we say rebudget, we mean same purpose. It's just an issue of timing.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was clear. Any other questions? Councilmember Wu.
You want to go back for a second? That prompted a question for me. So the police department items, certainly due to the changes in timing, 22,000 of unspent funds for police uniforms, et cetera, will be rebudgeted in the general fund. That says to me that it's not going to the police budget, it's going back into the general fund.
Well, the police budget is part of the general fund.
Okay, so it is going, basically, do you guys use account coding systems?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so it's going back straight to the account codes?
Yeah, same account codes.
Okay, for all of the rebudgets?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hazen.
I guess I'm going to, we didn't move this for approval yet, did we?
Yes.
Oh, we did, all right. Never mind. It's getting late. 10:40, move on.
All right. Any further questions? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. The next is Ordinance Number 2018-08-057, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, increasing number of Class G1 liquor licenses for Urbana Gardens Restaurant Incorporated DBA Urbana Gardens Family Restaurant at 810 Kalani Street, Urbana, Illinois. Madam Mayor.
Yes, this is an application for a video gaming liquor license at Urbana Gardens Restaurant. The net number of restaurants holding the video game license actually hasn't changed since this, Milos closed recently, gave up their G1 license, and this is replacing that. So they are adding video game terminals to the restaurant. It is. G1 Liquor.
G stands for gaming.
Councilmember Miller.
And now that we're saying that, I just realized that pursuant to the Illinois Liquor Control Act of 1934, I must recuse myself from voting on this item.
Madam, Councilmember Wu.
So you had mentioned that G1s are not increasing because Milos gave theirs up. Now, there's a Mexican restaurant down there where Milos was. What would happen if they decided that they wanted to add in gambling?
Then they would apply for the G1 license.
But we would have to increase the number.
We don't have a cap. If you recall, what we do each time we consider a liquor license, we consider each one individually. So there's no.
Right.
There's no total cap on the number of licenses, but the council considers each G1 license individually.
There's a lot of video gaming. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? I have one. I'll call on myself there. I thought there was some discussion, or maybe there should be some discussion about the number in any particular region or geographic region. So have we had much discussion about that, or what is the appetite of the council to have that conversation? Because I am somewhat concerned, being the alderman for Ward 3, I want to make sure that we have some sort of understanding about how that's going to operate going forward. Councilmember Jacobson.
So if I understand rightly, our enabling ordinance requires them to be spaced a certain distance apart, so I'm assuming that this is, was taken into account in bringing this to us.
Councilmember Brown.
I think the spacing requirements and the zoning requirements were just for the, what we considered gambling halls, which was the G2. Is that right? This is G1, right?
Oh, okay.
So for G1, they have to have a majority of their sales in food or alcohol, food or alcohol, from what I remember. But, and then they have to be appropriately zoned for food or alcohol, but for the G2, they had to actually be in a higher zone, B3, I think it was. And then they also had the spacing requirement for the G2 licenses.
Okay, thank you for.
From what I remember.
Thank you for repairing my memory.
Anyone else? So I certainly would want to make sure that we have a clear understanding, because it does get confusing, G1, and, so this is food, and they can have one or two machines.
You can have up to five machines, but the majority of your sales has to be from food or alcohol.
And is there a way for us to find out how many of these we have, for instance, in Ward 3, or how many we have in each ward?
Sure. We can bring a map next week showing where all the G1 and 2 licenses are. Would that help?
Well, I guess, yes, that would be, that would be great. Thank you very much. Mary, did you have another question?
No, I would be in support of at least looking geographically what the distribution of these machines are, so I think that's a great idea.
Okay, we'll get that for next week.
All right. Any further questions? All right, seeing none. There was a motion, was there?
No motion.
No, you said no motion.
No motion. Yep.
I will entertain a motion.
Well, I will move this on to the council with recommendation for approval pending, with the understanding that we will examine the map and may possibly, you know, decide based on that whether or not we're being too concentrated.
Is that like legally a motion, Charlie? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, so it's been moved by Councilmember Jacobson, second by Councilmember Hazen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Alright, so, seeing no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned.